City of North St. Paul, City Council Meeting for October 18th. If you could all stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everybody. This time Jenny, if you'd take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. And Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. At this time, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Council, Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no presentations. We do have the consent agenda and I'll turn that over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on the consent agenda is October 4th, 2022 workshop minutes. Item B, October 4th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims, $1,594,914.84. Item D, HRA claims, $38,527.26. Item E, building permit report, September of 2022. Item F, resolution approving acceptance of donations received, September of 2022. And item G, public works maintenance overlay approval.
We have one more, H, which is the memorandum of understanding for local number 211 patrol and 298 for sergeants, shift differential. Do you have that? You got that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have those items. At this time, a council member can pull item if they would like to at this time.
If I may pull G and H.
Oh, G and H. And we'll bring that down to the city business and action items and that will be, be F and G. So G and H would be F and G in the city business and action items. So at this time, motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items removed.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, meeting open to the public and I do have one, John Schmal.
Welcome, John. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. Just another leaf and water situation. After saying something about it, that I was unhappy about that. That Wednesday morning, when I went out early in the morning to mail a letter, put it in the mailbox, I looked down and, oh, I knew it must have been wash of leaves because this one, they came up on my driveway, almost hitting the sidewalk. So it didn't work out. My plan or my thought on this is, you know that there's five storm sores that go into Casey Lake. One of them has a settling pot, the one that comes down through Shawnee. You think you could work something out that part of the streets that dump into Casey, you would maybe sweep just those. You know, take a little bit of effort to do something. You just had a group at the first of the year, working on issues about Casey. And this is what we get as a result. So, thanks.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we don't have any, oh, we do have some public hearings and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is special assessment hearing for unpaid bills and authorizing the City of North St. Paul to certify the county auditor's official all unpaid, or office all unpaid fees. Dan, we got you back up here again. Mr. Winnick.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, welcome. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. This is the public hearing for special assessments. In September, the City Council authorized the issuance of a public hearing. This is to hear any comments that may be from any of the residents that are included in the unpaid, unpaid special assessments that are related to utilities, not including electricity. So anything with water, sewer, garbage, any, I think we didn't have any other types this year. Just some kind of information that is there. After this public hearing, they have an additional 30 days to make the payment without any interest. That day will expire on November 18th. After that point, we will certify it to the property tax rolls to Ramsey County, who was our county auditor. And just some statistical information for you to be aware. Last year, when we did the set public hearing date in 2021, we had approximately 22,500 outstanding balance for the assessment rolls. This year, we had about 15,500. When it came to this point in time last year, we were at about, we did have about $2,700 worth of payments. So it brought it down to about 19,700. This year, we've had about $3,000 worth of payments out of M.A.S. We're sitting at about 12,500. That potentially will go on to special assessments. The list that we're prepared, we're prepared last week. Even since that point in time, we've received another $1,000 from residents. So I think our process of notification and trying to get collection in the public hearing, I think, has worked very, very well. Many of the residents that are reoccurring for some odd reason will not pay during the year, especially on some of the maple wood properties that we provide water to. But as soon as it goes on to the property tax as a special assessment, it's paid. So don't exactly know why that is, but that's kind of the way it is. So actually, I think we're doing very, very well as far as we're not having an abundance of delinquent assessments. But I'm open to any questions or any public comments.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. 6:39. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address, have any questions or for the finance director, he's here right now. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And the motion would be, I believe, to accept.
There's two, two resolutions. Assessment resolution for, for the North St. Paul properties and an assessment resolution for the Maplewood properties. And there's four assessment rolls that are attached that is supporting documentation on those properties with the property identification number and the numbers. But we do need to have the two resolutions approved.
I can recommend, Mayor, just doing one resolution at a time. North St. Paul one first.
So the first one I have here is recommendation, resolution to adopt, resolution authorized in the City of North St. Paul to certify to the county auditor's office of all unpaid fees. Is that be correct?
Yeah, for water, wastewater, environmental utility, streetlights, solid waste and recycling for North St. Paul properties.
Is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any questions? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I do not have that.
I have, I can read it.
Do you have that second one?
Resolution approving assessments to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environment, environmental utility and recycling for Maplewood properties.
It's a motion, is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
I believe we have a second public hearing. I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B is to accept input on a proposed two lot subdivision of 2170 Eldridge Avenue North. This is where we're going to be billing the two student built houses, one this year and one next. I believe we have Brandy online for Zoom that was going to address this.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you for allowing me to zoom in tonight. I'm out of town at a conference in La Crosse. The item before you is a public hearing for a minor subdivision of 2170 Eldridge Avenue. You'll recall earlier this summer in June, the city and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority entered into a purchase agreement to acquire this piece of property. And they have since demolished the existing home that was deemed to be in substandard condition. And the plans are to replace that substandard home with two new single family houses. The houses are planned to be built by Century College through its student build housing program. And in order to build two houses, the lot will have to be subdivided. So the subdivision ordinance exempts plats containing three lots or less from going through the preliminary plating process. So as a minor subdivision, it simply needs to meet the subdivision requirements and go through a public hearing and City Council action. It was also looked at by the planning commission twice. The planning commission considered the property purchase back in June and then they looked at the subdivision back in October, or sorry, October 6th, just a couple of weeks ago. And they found that the subject site meets all zoning requirements and meets the subdivision ordinance requirements. The, the lot is already connected by sanitary sewer and water main. It's an existing street, so it's really a fairly simple subdivision. The city engineer also reviewed the plat and has requested that some drainage and utility easements be depicted on the plat before it's recorded. At the planning commission meeting in October, they reviewed the proposal against the comprehensive plan for consistency. They determined that the land split would advance the city's housing goals specifically to enhance neighborhood value and quality housing options at all types and price points. And thus, planning commission recommends to City Council approval of the minor subdivision plat of 2170 East Eldridge Avenue, subject to the approval conditions that are outlined in the draft resolution in your packet. And I can entertain any questions you might have for me.
What I'll do, I'll open up the public hearing at this time, 6:44. And I believe we do have some people that want to question possibly that. No? Is there anybody who would like?
Hey, just a couple of questions I have. My name is Don Schomel, I'm at 2169 Belmont Lane. And I was just questioning.
Brandy, can you hear okay?
I can now, yes.
Okay. Okay, maybe just make sure the mic is.
Okay. Yeah, I was just questioning the, originally Homestead Road bought that from the original owner for 120,000. And they did pretty much nothing there except removed a little trash. And then, and then the developer bought it for 165,000. And his ideas didn't fly and I, I understand why. But then the city paid 225,000 for it to him. Why did they pay so much? This started out at 120 and got all the way up to 225. I just wonder what kind of negotiation is that or whether there's some costs in there?
It's a good question.
It's like all the way up another 60,000.
Right.
So this guy, gee, I'd have bought the property if I hadn't owned this.
And I, I, I'll have Brandy answer, but I think, you know, the market was going so fast at that time too. I know there were expenses that were involved. We're supposedly getting the property at cost of what this last developer bought it. But maybe Brandy, if you can question.
That's all county record. We know what he paid for it.
Right, but I think there's a hard cost above and beyond what was determined. It's not just the land cost, there's hard costs that were involved. Brandy, I don't know if you have those or not, or?
Unfortunately, I wasn't involved in the property purchase of, of this specific piece of land. So I'm not entirely sure what the decision was when, when it occurred with the housing authority back in, in June. I do know that this item is related to just the land split. So if there's any questions related to how, how that is going to work with ordinance, as I can answer those questions.
No, I understand.
I believe the negotiator was our past city manager.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, I don't think you were a part of that negotiation. So.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, at the wrong meeting a little late, we did have that discussion. It was an HRA meeting and I raised those same concerns.
Yeah.
But, you know, it was voted on and approved, so.
Right, it was done, but I just.
And unfortunately, we're here tonight not to, you know, we're here to talk about the lots. But I, I can hear you loud and clear and I share your same concerns and I voice those and.
I've been watching this from the beginning and I keep thinking, why are they doing this? My, my other question was, how much does the city get involved? Like, those were all city workers cutting down all of those trees and they keep coming back. There are a lot of its good reasons, but how much city money is put into these projects? Not, I mean, they're a good idea, but I just wonder where all that city money comes from and does it?
And that was talked about tonight too, in regards to how we determine the cost, you know, if there's employees that are working on some of these projects, that money should go into that project cost.
Right, right.
So I'm assuming this will, this will go in.
That's, that's all I had.
Right. Thanks, John. Anybody else in regards to questions for Brandy? If not, close the hearing at 6:48. And the motion is to approval of a minor subdivision plat of 2170 East Eldridge Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, city attorney.
There are not enough votes to pass the resolution, so the resolution fails. As far as what happens next, there can be a motion to reconsider. The motion that had just failed and perhaps there could be more discussion on it, if that would be helpful.
Well, the project is underway. The, the house is being built. And council members?
Well, I can certainly explain why my vote of no.
Just procedurally, I guess I would recommend going back and doing a motion to reconsider and having this discussion within that framework, if that's all right.
Is there a motion for rediscussion of the matter?
Reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
I move to reconsider.
Moved by Councilmember Wong. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll go aye.
Well, he's asking us to reconsider.
So we're going to reconsider discussion.
Okay.
That's right.
So again, we do have a development that is being built. I don't know why this, at this time, council member would be against something that's in the process of, the dirt's already been turned and the, one of the properties is being built. The next property, I believe, will be built the following year. So, Councilmember Peterson, do you have?
Well, I just wanted to be consistent. I was against it in June, an HRA bill, meeting we had. And I should probably still stay consistent.
So the reason I voted no is the same reason someone was touched on today. Yes, the project has started on one half. We're asking tonight to split the lot. I don't think we should. I didn't think we should be in this anyway. The problem here is there's a missing council member. So if we want to vote on this when Tim Cole is here, then it'll pass. You want to try to convince one of us to change our votes, I'm not going to. Out of the fact that I didn't agree with the purchase of this property, we paid too much for it. The housing market's changing, you know, we're, we're going to be, it's just putting taxpayer dollars at places we shouldn't be doing so. That's why I'm not going to vote to support a lot split now. And it's not going to prevent the current project from moving forward because the current project should be on the half that's, you know, still, I mean, if this doesn't go through, in theory, one house will be built on this entire lot and we can continue to do that, which probably would make more sense at this point, but.
So I look at it as, Councilmember Wong.
Well, I think that is a little bit antithetical to the comprehensive plan. And so I guess I'm a little bit confused on that end. And then if we are here supporting student built housing, is that not consistent with splitting the lot?
And the plan was from the beginning to subdivide that lot to have stock for the next two years for the student build housing. And that was approved at, at that meeting. And it, as Brandy had mentioned, Brandy, if you could maybe mention again that it fits the need of the HRA plan?
It was the comprehensive plan that the city has agreed that it meets the, the goals of ensuring affordable housing options and existing neighborhood environment. So I think Councilmember Wong kind of addressed, addressed that fact. Councilmember Thorson is also correct. It is an existing lot, building one home on that lot can go forward, but putting two houses on, on the lot would create an option to have two properties to eventually sell. So that might be something to consider too. So it all boils down to more housing options in an area where there is already kind of a high density, single family, and it would be consistent with the existing makeup of that neighborhood.
And that was approved at the, at the HRA meeting. So can we table this until?
Certainly, yes. You can table it. I was just looking at the calendar. It looks like November 1st is your next meeting. Is that right, Jenny? So that one or the next one, it's nice to table it specifically to the next meeting that you want to pick it back up at, so.
And we can still do that? Not a problem?
Yes.
Be a problem?
That should not be a problem.
Even the vote that we had?
Correct, right, because we cracked it back open in the motion to reconsider.
So I need a motion for the table?
Yes.
And this is all Robert's rules and I'm not, this is beyond my.
It's okay, that's why I'm here.
Okay, good, thank you. So at this time, motion to table the motion?
I'll make that a motion, Our Honor.
So moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. So we'll table that until, till the next meeting. Make sense back there? So at this time, I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on the city business action items and recommendations. Next four items are grants that are available for the Lilly project. First item, A, authorization to apply for a deed contamination cleanup grant. We do have Brandy online that can talk to this and also if Jim has any discussion he would like to, he's welcome to come up as well.
Yep, thanks, everybody, for allowing me to talk again. So as, as mentioned, the developer, Jim Lovell, I believe is in the audience, the, of the Lilly Building Project, he has requested a partnership with the city to submit three grant applications. Those would go to deed, the Met Council and Ramsey County for cleanup grants to assist in the funding of the cleanup on the site. So as you might be aware, the, the site previously has been used as a gas station, a grocer, paint sprayer assembly and a newspaper publishing. So investigation by, by the development team has uncovered that there is asbestos abatement that's going to be required prior to building demolition. Additionally, petroleum impacted soil and groundwater will be encountered during excavation activities that will require special management and disposal. So the developer is in the process of putting together three grant applications and is requesting that the city act as the official applicant on their behalf. So the three grants are, one for deed and that particular grant requires a 25% financial match. So that, that match would be paid for by the two other grants. So the cleanup grant from Ramsey County, there is no match for that. And the Met Council T-Bra grant also does not require a match. So of the 25% deed match, half of that would be met by those two other grants. The remaining half would be paid directly by the developer. So if the city is going to move forward and act as the applicant for this and the, the city is awarded for these three grants, they would then enter into a sub-agreement with the developer so that the reimbursement for the costs would be incurred and paid out through that agreement. And then the developer would assist the city in preparing progress reports and administering the grants. So in order for the grant applications to go forward, they need to have resolutions of support from the city. So that's what's outlined in your, in your packet. Deed has two specific resolutions to it. One is basically saying we support it. The other is saying that we support the match. And then the, the other two are just resolutions of support. So I, I understand that the developers in the audience, I think that his project engineer, Jennifer Force is also in the audience and she's a little bit more knowledgeable about these grant application requirements, so she can assist if there's any questions about, about them. And I'll, I'll turn it over now.
Welcome, Jen.
Evening, councilmembers.
One of those nights.
Yeah, one of those nights. I introduced Jennifer Force. She's with the S.E.H. and I want to thank Brandy for her quick summary. I've worked with Jennifer for several, on several projects in several years, but we've identified some things that are over and above what we expected. We did have a small budget for those kind of things, but we keep uncovering more. So this will help us bridge those, those problems. So if you have any specific questions about these specific grants or our discovery and other things, I can fire, fire, fire away at us.
You haven't found any gold or anything while you're looking for these things?
We've got, we've got some old newspapers in there too, so. So on that stuff in there too.
Any questions for Jennifer or Jim? So is there a lot more than what we expected? Are you finding more? We probably won't know until you actually do do the digging of the property or?
Well, we've done several tests as far as borings and asbestos and those types of things. And I think we need to do some more borings.
Right, because the way the, the site is laid out, the Lilly.
Right, because the way the, the site is laid out, the Lilly Building covers most of the eastern half of the site, so we still have some additional work to do there. But on the western end, that westernmost property was a gas station, and, and there is petroleum contamination from those underground storage tanks that is still in place.
Yeah, they took this GPR system out there that identifies metals, so there's tanks that have been, been in the ground since the.
So there are takes, there are takes still there.
We believe there's still tanks, and the piping is still there.
And the piping is there, so it's leaching through the soils and migrating, and so.
Sure.
And we have to do, the new building requires some venting systems underneath the concrete floor to keep the vapors out of the building and some other things. So, we did have a small budget. We anticipated some problems, but it appears as though we're gonna have a lot more problems, and that's what these grants are enabled to help us with.
That's the purpose of the grants, is to offset these additional costs.
So I wanna be great if the city could support us. We, you know, there will be an administrative function, the money rolls through the city, and I believe in a couple of the programs. There's an annual reporting that's, I've done it in several projects. I haven't done it for a few years, but it's, it's like an hour's worth of work every, you know, it's, anyway.
Once or twice a year, depending upon where the, how far along the development is. And then, I believe TBRA has a little bit of post-development reporting as well. But it's just, it's a one, once a year. It's literally, they have a form, you fill it out, send it in. Not much time at all. Jim is willing to do that.
Yeah, we're certainly willing to reimburse the city for their staff time. Help us get through that process, so.
Good. We have a lot of gas stations back in the day.
Yeah, we seem to pick 'em, too. Pick the glowing sites, that's one of my talents.
Are there limitations to the grant in terms of how many times an applicant can apply for any of these?
There's not.
Okay, so.
And there's, there's actually.
You can be awarded multiple times?
And there's, there's actually no guarantee. These are very competitive grant rounds. There's, they're very, almost 100% oversubscribed, and usually at least by two times over, so there's no guarantee that we're getting them either. There are many different scoring criteria that they go by. So, and I think this is a great spot that'll meet a lot of those criteria that they, they score by, so hopefully we're successful.
And it is, you, the opportunities, the applications open up twice a year? So they accept applications on November 1st. If a grant is not awarded, you would have to wait until May 1st to apply again.
Oh, so we need them now?
Yeah.
Good. All right, any other questions? If not, the first one is, you guys are welcome to sit down. Thank you, thank you. First one is for approval for a resolution authorizing an application to deed for a contamination cleanup grant for the Lilly redevelopment site?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The second one, and I'm just gonna go through these four. Second one is authorizing a local match commitment for a deed contamination cleanup grant.
So moved.
Yep, cleanup grant. Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Third one is, approve resolution of support to apply for the Metropolitan Council Tax Base Revitalization Account, TBRA cleanup grant.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And the fourth one, resolution of support to apply for the Metropolitan Council Tax Base Revitalization Account, TBRA cleanup grant.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries.
We might have double-dipped on that last one.
You always gonna say, yeah.
It's super adopted.
The other ones, we're really cleaning that up.
I can, I can read this one if you want.
Resolution authorized application for the Ramsey County Environmental Response Fund grant for the Lilly redevelopment project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I think I had it twice in here, that's why I had it. Well, we got a lot of cleanup, a lot of cleanup, so, thank you, Jim. Yep, appreciate it. Turn it back over to City Manager Frandl.
Item E is consideration of ordinance 809, North St. Paul City Code as it relates to the composition of Arts and Culture Commission. The backgrounds on this is the Arts and Culture Commission is proposing to change the number of commissioners from five to seven, which will help of additional commissioners, would allow for more subcommittees to help expedite the plans of the commission, having more people available to accomplish things. So we're looking for approval on that amendment.
Is there, I don't know if Councilmember Wong, if you wanted maybe just to explain a little bit the need for?
Yeah, so through the Arts and Culture Commission, we've had a couple rounds of interviews in the past, and we've seen a, a number of folks interested, and that would support the need for more commissioners, and also to help expedite project planning and getting things going without, you know, interfering through a quorum or however. So, allowing the, the commissioners to do their work.
So the motion is for an ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Code as it relates to composition of the Arts and Culture Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
So, item F, which is item G from the consent agenda, is for the.
Public Works.
Maintenance overlay approval.
So, I'll turn that over to Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at this, and it looks like it's next to a school. And that's something that just struck me immediately is, is there any plan to include perhaps a sidewalk for students as they're, you know, going in and around school? Because I see it's kind of on a main, main street, so just wonder if we've considered that.
So, an overlay, we usually don't do that, but I'll turn that over to City Manager Frandl. And we don't have Ron here.
Yeah, I wanna invite Mr. Winnick back up. You were in conversation with Ron about this. I was wondering if you could shed some light, please? You thought you were done.
I just have a, a mayor, councilmember, I just have one question for City Manager Frandl. The dollar amount of this, is this the one that's approximately like $29,000? Yeah, yeah, so, in, the mayor started to speak about that. So we had a great opportunity. Actually, we're starting to, you know, get to the, the year, end of the year where you're not gonna have the opportunity to do any mill and overlays. And, so we've had this opportunity, we've got money within the budget to be able to take care of this. And so, in a mill and overlay, it, it's, it's basically just going over there. We're not doing curb and gutter. We're not, not opening up the opportunity to look at adding sidewalks or any other components. It's a very low cost trying to maintain the street for, you know, an additional 10, 15 years. So, great question, that's something that I know that our engineer and, and Ron have been discussing. Anytime that we do have a full reconstruct, that we look at the options of sidewalks within there to make the community more walkable.
And I've asked that before in regards to other overlayments. It's a good idea to, you know, start looking at sidewalks, but.
Yeah.
But I got the same answer. It's more just a overlayment, and they're just trying to.
So that preserves it for another 10, 20 years, whereas if, you know, for example, if a full reconstruct were to be done, that would need to wait for the whole road to crumble for another 20 years, so.
Well, we don't like to see it actually crumble, but, yeah, when, when, yeah, when you actually couldn't do a mill and overlay again, yes, then you'd do a full road reconstruction onto it, but, yeah.
So the, unless there's other questions. Motion is for approval of T.A. Schiffsky and Sons Maintenance Overlay Proposal of $29,600.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And then, the next one was, is it the memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, it was item H that was added this afternoon.
Yep, well, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm just trying to get some clarity on the difference in language and whether that has a, an impact financially, and what it looks like.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Wong. I'm actually the one who asked for this clarification. The original language that was agreed to in the, both of those union contracts basically speaks to the fact that if you're regularly scheduled from a shift from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, that you're entitled to the $1 shift differential pay. It had nothing to do with if you actually worked it. So the questions came up, if I was on vacation, whether I was unsick, as long as I'm regularly scheduled, I, I, I'm entitled to, to payment. Then it, it flips to the opposite side. You're out, and I now come in and fill in for your shift. I'm not on overtime. Even if I were on overtime, the way the language is, is that I'm not entitled to that extra dollar or a dollar and a half on an overtime. So I, I asked for clarification from that and what the intent. And so, the dialogue that I had with two individuals on the police force, one representing the sergeant, one representing the police officers, was that, at least from the police officer standpoint, was that the intent in their discussions was that if somebody was getting overtime, that they would not get the differential, which actually reduces our cost for the city. Because the way it was written before, you would have given that addition to it on an automatic basis. So that, there is a, a slight reduction. Again, nothing significant, significant on that part to it. And then, I don't know what version we have, if we have the version where there are two different, subtle language differences between the sergeant and the police force. And the sergeants, that's what both of those groups ended up coming with. I, I won't tell you which one I prefer, but it, in, in essence, it really doesn't have that much of an impact for the city as far as the, the shift differential. And it was really more important to be able to get the clarification of what the meanings, we didn't end up having additional grievances tying up time from a legal standpoint and from staff time, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
So the motion is for approval resolution number 2022 approving memorandum, memorandum of understanding shift differential, LELS, Local Number 298, and LELS, Local Number 211.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Seconded, Your Honor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports of city manager and departments, so they have started distributing the opioid settlement amounts. The first settlement that we will get, it's, it's over years, but it's not a lot. It's like, it's a little over $40, $100, and there are very specific things that you can use them on, whether or not it's counseling or prevention. But we also have, be holding meetings. Ramsey County's putting them on with the local cities and for best practices and how to spend the money. So we'll be attending that. The downtown plantings are happening this year. I know before they were thinking that they weren't gonna happen. There was concerns that they wouldn't warranty them if they put them out this time of year, but the contractor did say that they, he would warranty the plants, so they are gonna go ahead with the planting them. Of course, we're doing winter preparations now, unfortunately, already, but they're blowing out sprinklers and putting plows on trucks and just getting ready.
Is the irrigation's all in? I'm assuming they did go all the irrigation underneath the sidewalks and everything? Is that all in, or is it?
The piping is in. I don't know that all of the irrigation is in yet. So the piping to put the sleeves, or the irrigation through that sleeve for the each individual green space areas, I don't know that that is fully complete yet. It's having right now.
And another question I have is, so when they mark the sidewalks, they're marking it, all the sidewalks with all the spray paint, is that permanent spray paint, or does that go away?
That is spray chalk.
What is it?
Spray chalk. It's a different, from paint that.
Okay.
Yes.
I've had few people call and say they're spray painting, and how long is that gonna last? Morgan shaking his head.
Yeah, I knew Brian would know the answer to this question, but it, it is a legal requirement to locate underground utilities per state statute, so it's nothing that can be avoided. They need to be marked in some fashion, but whether it's spray chalk or sometimes they might use latex or something, it usually really doesn't last very long. So, it's not, may stay through a couple rain events, but typically within a couple months, it's pretty much faded and gone. So, yeah, it looks bad on our brand new sidewalk right away.
I'm giving you a brush and.
I will be out there with my toothbrush, yes. It is a legal requirement, so there's no way we can get around.
I figured that, but it just, it just, it just looks bad.
On brand new, yeah.
On brand new concrete.
I agree, I agree.
I followed up on that right away.
Did you? Good, good.
We're also doing flu shots again this year for the employees. That's gonna be on October 26th. There is one round that's given out during the day, and then one at night for people who can't make it during the day, whether it's police officers or the fire department. And that is all I've got.
Any questions for City Manager? Not, reports of council, commission committees, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, so, on the 5th of October, the Arts and Culture Commission, to kind of wrap up some of the last-minute preparations for the fall frolic. And so a big thank you to the commissioners for putting that together. They had the art cart out there, and they had several craft vendors out at Casey Lake, so I think it was pretty well-attended. The Business Association has also voted to partner under the project Snowy. And then, yeah, I think the Arts and Culture will continue moving on with their new projects.
And you'll be able to get two new members.
And I believe that Carrie will be working on.
She's on it. She's on it.
Awesome, yeah, so, kind of interviewing some folks and applications. And the Planning Commission had met on the 6th, and as you had known, there was the public hearing about the subdivision plot. And then, there was also some discussion around the new proposed development on 2395 Market Street, just right outside here. So there was just some nice discussion about, you know, what people were hoping to see and how it would align with the comp plan. So, there was also a discussion about the sign ordinance that we just passed. There was a discussion about the signs that we had put out as a city and its distance away from the road. Typically, we see signs, I think. away from the road. Typically, we see signs, I think, particularly the temporary signs about a foot away from the curb. And so there was discussion about whether that was a safety concern. And so they've tabled that for discussion and considering a two to three or more feet distance from the road. Yep, and that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Thorson. I'd just like to follow up on the fall frolic. We had probably, there's quite a few people down there, and it was a cold day, though, cold night. It was pretty cold. And we had some bands and entertainment and vendors, food vendors. I thought it was a really well-put-out fall frolic, Halloween-type thing. And it went from kids to adults. And but again, it got very cold. And I think the band ended an hour early because it was, it was cold. It was cold. So general business, Councilmember Wong.
I have nothing. Thank you.
General business, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Thorson.
I am going to be absent from the first meeting in November, so. And I'm not going to be able to participate via Zoom.
Are you going someplace fun?
Well, some people consider Las Vegas fun, but it's kind of work-related, so we'll see. Maybe I won't come back.
And I don't have anything, so anything else? A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was looking at City Manager. Are you going to make the motion?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.